Okay, checking audio for YouTube. One, two, three, four. Hey, hey. One, two, three, four.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City of Dellafield Common Council meeting for October 20th, 2025, calling to order at 6:16 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please, Molly.
Sure thing. Other person Henry?
Here.
Other person Schaefer?
Here.
Other person Valde?
Here.
Other person Wilkin?
Here.
Other person Pavan?
Here.
Other person Price?
Here.
Other person Leflin?
Here.
Mayor Iker?
President.
And Minister Hafner?
Here.
Okay, thank you. So I have an announcement for matters for possible closed session. The council will be reconvening immediately after the closed session, which is likely to take about 35 to 45 minutes. So for a motion to convene and to close session pursuant to provisions of Wisconsin statute 1985-1E deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. More specifically, for the Western Lakes Fire District to present a proposal as requested by the common council to provide fire, rescue, and emergency medical services to the city of Dellafield. So looking for a motion to move into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please, Molly.
Other person Henry?
Aye.
Other person Schaefer?
Aye.
Other person Valde?
Aye.
Other person Wilkin?
Aye.
Other person Pavan?
Aye.
Other person Price?
Aye.
Other person Leflin?
Aye.
Okay, so as of this moment, then we're in closed session. So those of you that aren't involved in that will be invited back in when it's done.
Testing, testing.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Thanks for being patient. Looking for a motion to reconvene into open session. So moved.
Dirk.
Second.
Mark. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Other person, Henry?
Aye.
Other person, Schaefer?
Aye.
Other person, Valdi?
Aye.
Other person, Logan?
Aye.
Other person, Pavin?
Aye.
Other person, Price?
Aye.
Other person, Leflin?
Aye.
Okay, great. We're back in open session. Thank you for your patience, everybody. We've got a very special order of business. Item five A, presentation of police department awards. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Niren.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Chief Niren with the City of Delafield Police Department. And it is my honor today to be here to present several awards to both officers and a member of the community. So we're going to start off with Officers Joseph Walker and Lucas Wolfe.
I'm sorry if my cadence was quick, Chief. There's no reason to hurry through anything.
Okay, no worries.
These are important. These are well deserved, so thank you.
All right. And so, in recognition of their outstanding dedication, professionalism, and decisive action during a critical incident on May 17th, 2024. On that day, Officer Joseph Walker and Officer Lucas Wolfe responded to a life-threatening situation involving a suicidal subject attempting to jump from the Genesee Street Overpass at I-94. Demonstrating exceptional composure and commitment to public safety, Officer Walker made initial contact with the distressed individual, establishing vital communication and providing reassurance. Recognizing the complexity of the situation, he facilitated the transition of negotiations to Officer Wolfe, who is a trained negotiator, while maintaining engagement with the subject. Officer Wolfe took over negotiations with the distressed individual while maintaining critical engagement and ensuring the safety of all involved. At a critical moment, Officers Walker and Wolfe acted swiftly and decisively, safely apprehending the individual, ultimately preventing a tragic outcome. Their dedication to preserving life and their collaborative efforts exemplify the highest standards of law enforcement. So for his distinguished service and commitment to safeguarding the community, Officer Joseph Walker is awarded the Distinguished Service Award. And for his exceptional valor and service, Officer Wolfe is hereby awarded his second Police Star Award. A testament to his continued bravery and dedication to protecting this community. Thank you both for your service. All right, moving on to Officer Joseph Madison. This one is long overdue, and I do apologize that it took this long. But in recognition of outstanding bravery, vigilance, and decisive action during the Waukesha Christmas Parade mass casualty event on November 21st, 2021. On this tragic day, Officer Joseph Madison demonstrated exceptional situational awareness and swift judgment when he astutely identified a male suspect matching the description of the individual responsible for the attack. With professionalism and composure, he confronted and engaged the suspect, playing a critical role in ensuring the safety of the community. Through seamless collaboration with fellow officers at partner agencies, Officer Madison's efforts contributed to the swift apprehension of a dangerous individual, preventing further harm. His courageous actions and dedication to duty reflect the highest ideals of law enforcement and exemplify true heroism in the face of crisis. For his exemplary service and commitment to public safety, Officer Joseph Madison is hereby awarded the Police Star. Congratulations. Thank you so much. We will finish with the law enforcement awards. The next one is for Detective Daniel Blado, who cannot be here tonight, but I do just want to go over his award. It's presented in recognition of superior investigative performance and unwavering dedication in solving a complex series of seven burglaries committed between 2016 and 2017. Assigned to the case in September of 2019, Detective Blado demonstrated exceptional persistence and investigative skill, meticulously analyzing evidence and collaborating with multiple law enforcement agencies. And through his efforts and with the valuable assistance of the Waukesha County Sheriff, Washington County Sheriff, and Sheboygan County Sheriff, he successfully identified a suspect in May of 2020. In August of 2024, Detective Blado conducted a formal interview with the suspect, securing critical information that allowed him to finalize the investigation. His commitment to justice and attention to detail culminated in September of 2024 when he submitted a comprehensive prosecution package to the district attorney's office, ensuring accountability for these crimes. For his outstanding investigative work and dedication to upholding the highest standards of law enforcement, Detective Daniel Blado is hereby awarded the Superior Investigation Award. Thank you, Dan. And finally, we come to a citizen award tonight. I call up Stacy Dean. So this is presented in recognition of extraordinary action in recognizing and assisting a person in grave danger on April 30th, 2025. With sunset quickly approaching, Ms. Stacy Dean was driving on Veddelson Road in the city of Delafield. Demonstrating uncommon attentiveness and concern, Ms. Dean observed something unusual on the side of the roadway and turned around to check. Ms. Dean located a 90-year-old resident that had fallen and sustained injuries. She immediately called 911 and stayed with the person until medical assistance arrived. With the sun setting and temperatures dropping into the 40s, Ms. Dean's actions undoubtedly prevented a more tragic outcome. So for her exceptional community responsibility and human kindness, we are honored to present Ms. Stacy Dean with the Citizen Meritorious Conduct Award for lifesaving. It should be noted that the Citizen Meritorious Conduct Awards have equivalent requirements as those awarded to sworn police officers. Not only were Ms. Dean's actions above and beyond for a member of the public, but rose to a level where we would honor a member of our own department with the same award. Thank you so much. Thank you to all the friends and family and community members for being here. It is a great honor to work in a community with members like Mrs. Dean and the officers and firefighters and paramedics that we work with on a daily basis. I'm truly blessed to be a part of this community and work with everyone. So thank you so much, and I'll turn you back over to the exciting stuff.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you all for being here to recognize this is very, it's always overdue, but thanks, thanks for coming. So on to, like Chief said, exciting stuff. We're looking for a motion to approve the minutes from September 15th, regular meeting for the council.
I move to approve the minutes of our September 15th regular meeting.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Abstentions? Okay, minutes for September approved.
I have a, not sure if it was Wilken or Price that got that.
I think it's second. Okay, October 6th, regular meeting minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of the October 6th meeting.
Second.
Any questions, amendments, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Abstentions?
I'm abstaining. I wasn't here.
Okay, okay, minutes are passed. Item seven, City of Delafield citizens comments. If there's anyone here wishes to speak to anything on or off the agenda, please step forward. Yes, sir. You can come up to the microphone, sit down, press the bottom horizontal bar, and just name an address, please, to kick it off.
Good evening. My name is Paul Jaworski. I'm the new Commodore at the Nagawicca Lake Yacht Club.
Can you please spell your last name? And can you provide your address, please?
My address is 3345 Silver Circle Drive, and that's in Oconomowoc.
Right.
First of all, I'd like to say that we at Nagawicca Lake Yacht Club understand that our motion for additional parking on the street has been denied, and we accept the wishes of our neighbors and of the council in this matter. Most of the comments that we heard from the neighbors at the September meeting came as a shock and a surprise to us, to me and to us as a board. Except for occasional regattas, which are two to three a year, we only have regular sailing two nights a week and only three months out of the year, Memorial through Labor Day normally. I want to make sure that, that the public record reflects that we understand that there were complaints of excessive drinking and noise. However, we pride ourselves on being a sailing club first and foremost, and this came as a real surprise to us that these comments came out. This year, we've taken hard measures to decrease noise to our neighbors. We've limited outdoor music, and we stop at 10:00 PM during the week, 11:00 PM on weekends, without exception. We cap attendance at all of our events to make sure that the noise is kept down and doesn't affect our neighbors. And we will be installing, moving forward, decibel meters at our club to ensure that the noise levels are not bothersome to our neighbors. I'll be drafting a letter also that I'll be, I'm planning to send to each one of our neighbors, first to apologize, and then to ask if they'll meet with me so I can hear firsthand of what they have to say. Any feedback that they may have, so how we can resolve these issues. In addition to being a sailing club, we make sure that we do operate also as a service to the community. We host regattas each year, which bring in people from all over the country, all over the state. Bring business to our restaurants and our hotels and our parks. We offer sailing school every year to kids and adults. Since 2020 alone, we've educated over 400 kids and 100 adults on how to sail. We've hosted the annual lake welfare committee meetings and the Delafield Council meetings, and we sponsor the Delafield fireworks each year. And the Delafield symbol includes sailboats. So I guess I wanted to say that we do try to be good neighbors and good proponents and good proponents of our community. This year also, I wanted to say that right now in September and October, we're also hosting the Wisconsin High School Fall Sailing Program. This is for high school students all across southeastern Wisconsin, where they come to our club, to our community, and they learn how to sail from all the high schools that offer sailing programs in southeastern Wisconsin. For those of you that have done it before, I know there are some that have, sailing can be a very challenging sport and offers some of the best life-building skills, opportunities that I know for young folks. It teaches them to respect for others, helps them build self-confidence, and teaches them how to be an effective team or crew member and an effective leader. Again, I'll be reaching out to each one of our neighbors and asking them to meet so I can hear their feedback firsthand. We want to be good neighbors just as they are to us. And, and if there's anybody here, Mark, would, would be able to facilitate those meetings, I'd be all on board for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your candor and look forward to a follow-up on how things work out. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, ma'am. Yep, she's behind you.
My name is Jean Nigel, N-I-G-E-L. I live at W-325-N4145 Marina Drive in Nashona. And I come to represent the Nagawicca Lake Yacht Club Sailing School. It is a separate 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, which is why I'm kind of piggybacking on, on Paul's comments. One thing I want to say first is many people don't understand there's an organization called the Inland Lake Yachting Association, and there are hundreds of yacht clubs from Wisconsin, Illinois, Michigan, Minnesota, and Iowa. And we are the fifth established yacht club, which means we are the, one of the oldest yacht clubs in the whole Midwest area. That gives us a lot of history and adds to the history of Delafield, and we're very proud of that. We bring people from all over the Midwest, from all of these different states to regattas, and these people are exposed to Delafield and the Lake Country area, and they get to see what I call God's country. Anyways, we have also Peter Keck. I don't know if any of you know him, but he is a national winner in sailing, and he's from our yacht club. So we have a lot of recognition around the Midwest. Besides that, our sailing school, I've been involved with our sailing school for about 20 years now, and it services, as he had said, hundreds of kids in the last few years. Each summer, we have 80 students come through our program and 20 adults. We also service adults. There are plenty of adults that like to learn how to sail. We also host the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts as a community service. With that, I want to express to the group a surprise that came to me. I married into a sailing family, and therefore, when I came, I was a novice. But my profession is a math teacher, and when I experienced this at first, I could not believe, I was amazed at all the math and science involved in sailing. And Paul had mentioned the life skills that we give these kids. One of the life skills that they get is not only the math with the geometry, the surface area, all of that stuff, but perseverance. It's the one sport where a child starts at eight years old and competes against kids that are 16 years old, all in the same race. Those 16-year-olds have been racing for eight years. Obviously, that eight-year-old is probably going to come in last. And what they have to do is persevere, not just for a race, but maybe for a couple of years, and set small goals and persevere and make their way up to the top. That's a skill that, I don't know about you guys, but we've lost that skill in kids recently because of technology, because of instant gratification. It's very rare that we can even create those environments in a school environment where they have to persevere that long and that much to reach a goal. So that's one of the, my proudest life skills in this school, or educating kids to be sailors. But also, they are in charge of a multi-thousand-dollar boat.
I'm sorry for interrupting, but I appreciate everything that you have to say. We have a really full agenda tonight and something actionable that we can...
Did I already go through my three minutes?
Well, something, no, no, but I mean, something actionable that we can, that this council can act on, or, you know, we can definitely follow it up with a letter to all of us, too. But what is it that you're asking, or?
Well, I want to... Well, I want to express what we add to the community.
Oh, okay.
And that's my goal. We also employ five high school students throughout the summer. I'll close with, I hope that those of you who don't know us on this council, open your perspective and really learn what the NLYC is about. And we invite you to come visit, we invite you to come watch a race, we have lots of spectator boats, or better yet, come sail with us. We'd love to teach you how to sail.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak? I don't know who to pick first, you're on the end. One of you decide. There you go, you don't have to hold, there you go, perfect.
Okay. That's good.
Name an address, please, Chloe.
I am Chloe Wan Schneider, and I'm 834 Mill Street. Okay, my husband Ross, who recently passed at age 89, was born and raised in Dellafield. And my family moved to Dellafield in 1949. It was a city of 700 people, and we had one street light. It was at the Bark River for the volunteer fire department for their night calls. So, obviously, the two of us witnessed many city changes and events. We were born during the Depression years, and then our childhood was in World War II. Both of those eras were the greatest economic-challenging times in American history. And important life skills were taught. It was God, family, community, and country. And decisions were guided by what is necessary and what are the probabilities. Ross's father realized that Dellafield needed paramedics. And he found a way, and ironically, the very first call that was made was for his brother. It was an allergic bee sting. The paramedics saved his life, and it was the first saving life for the paramedics. Now, these examples lead us to the Six Slip Pier at St. John's Bay. Are these piers necessary? Absolutely not. In fact, the DNR standard designated the bay as an area of sensitivity, and guidelines were established for its management. The slips are in conflict with these standards and are divisive within the community. We are blessed that Negoawica Lake is the very best lake in Waukesha County. No one owns the lake, but every Dellafield resident is a temporary custodian, and their purpose is to preserve it, spread education about it, and to inspire. Oops. That one's a naughty one. The Six Slip Pier does absolutely none of these. The piers destroy. The piers do not offer education, and definitely do not inspire generational compassion for the gift of Lake Negoawica. The piers only offer limited varied activities for a few. Now, helping each other makes us all stronger. Dividing our city because you can does not make our community better. This project has been, and it continues to be incredibly divisive. You consider the animal kingdom, we help it, and it helps us with balanced sustainability, food, air, water, beauty, tranquility, and recreation. Protecting the bay by considering projects that work in concert with the shallow waters and the protected status makes totally complete sense. Ross and I witnessed the unintentional destruction of the bay in 1950. It took decades to restore the bay, and I want you to take note that on the North Bay, it is in approaching destruction. Carp are already in there in abundance. Now, in the Bible, the most often-used words are "fear not." So, I humbly ask you to fear not, to have the courage to do what is right. And to fear not to defend the bay and do what is right. In my 40 years of a teaching career, I manage my classroom with an A-B-C philosophy. And I'll use that for the city. The A is accountability. Spend your tax dollars wisely. Repair the city hall front steps, the brick crosswalks, and provide valuable deserving wages for the police, the fire department, and the DPW workers. The B is borders. For the city, piers and the boat traffic infringe on the shorelines, which impacts the kayak, paddleboard enthusiasts, fishing, and whatever lives, grows, and reproduces in the bay. And the C is consequences. For the city, it's going to be extensive costs for maintenance, access facilities, police coverage, DPW responsibilities, and in addition, there will be water pollution, which eliminates the youth and family fishing opportunities and shuts down the present kayak business. Now, in closing, I'm going to ask you to honor beautiful Negoawica Lake and this charming, unique community. Consider the projects that benefit the most while dividing us the least. Consider what is necessary and what are the possibilities. Now, looking in front of all of this stuff here, these are the objectives, and you'll notice they're all face-down. They struck out. And I know, after 13 years of dating and 65 years of marriage, my husband Ross, this would be his words. He was a successful ball player and a coach, and he would say, "This game plan requires a major adjustment. Life naturally throws curveballs at us. There is no need to deliberately hurl bad pitches." Thank you.
Thanks, Chloe, you got all of Ross's time, too. So, you still have it, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
I have to clean up, excuse me, hurry.
Well, thank you for giving us this opportunity. My name is Frances Bills. I live at 1522 Milwaukee Street here in Dellafield, and I, too, am going to speak on behalf of St. John's Bay. Federal funds and services to states are being greatly reduced. Dellafield and other municipalities should expect less funds and services from the state. All city funds should be used to maintain our existing infrastructure and ensure that we have the best possible fire and EMT protections. This means moving money allocated for nonessential endeavors to maintaining what we have. The cost of putting in the piers might be covered by donations, but the cost of a paved parking lot, lighting, signage, toilets, policing, and general maintenance will be the responsibility of city residents, taxpayers. Policing this area is made difficult due to curbs and streets and trees. This will add to the police patrol routes. There is no plan for a boat launch on St. John's Bay. The piers will be accessible primarily to those who already live on Negoawica Lake. Others with boats have to launch from Nagawaki County Park on the other side of the lake. The county park boat launch closes at 10:00 PM, limiting how long those boat owners will visit restaurants and shops in downtown Dellafield. A far better and far less expensive option is to install a safe kayak, canoe, paddleboard launch. Right now, paddlers must deal with slippery, dangerous rocks to launch. A safe kayak launch would bring far more people and their purses into the city. Dellafield shares park and recreation activities with Heartland. Heartland Parks and Recreation already offers classes in our fish hatchery. Through Heartland, we could offer kayak lessons to kids and adults. The Kettle Moraine School District might be interested in offering paddling instruction and safety through their recreation program. Dellafield is an ice age trail community. Many who visit our city hike and paddle and would be interested in information about the bay's aquatic environment. Nature education could be provided to children and adults by installing QR codes around the bay describing the environment. Since paddlers visit via their vehicle, they can lock their kayak, canoe, paddleboards on top and stay into the evening to dine and shop. I urge you to cancel all plans to build piers on St. John's Bay and instead, consider a safe, relatively inexpensive kayak, canoe, paddleboard launch that would bring more people into our downtown area to shop and dine. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak tonight? Yes, Jackie.
Thank you, everyone, I appreciate that. Hello, for those of you who don't know, my name is Jackie Lyden, L-Y-D-E-N, and I live at 1614 West Shore Drive on Lake Negoawica, where I grew up. And sometimes, to my amazement, I am now back, and they're pretty much 90% of the time these days. I don't know exactly how many years the pier project's been discussed, at least five. And I just was thinking, how many things have changed since the dock was permitted? The national economic picture and consumer confidence are much cloudier. Grants for state projects have been greatly reduced, and costs to fund police, fire, and rescue and other labor costs in the city are higher, and they're going to continue to go higher. We are heavy users at our house of lake country fire and rescue. I cannot say enough good things about them, and I want to preserve their excellence. They've been lifesavers for us over and over again. So, with all those things being the case, I've never understood the necessity or the desirability of a project that will benefit just such a few, I would figure quite well-off group of boat owners who want a parking lot. We have a boat, we're on the lake, you know, I don't need to park downtown, I can get there all kinds of ways. And I think that for the rest of the community, this pier has never been popular with the vast majority of our Dellafield residents because they're not going to use it. But they will see their tax dollars go to increased infrastructure costs associated with maintaining that pier. And I don't need to go down this list again, but I will quickly. Lighting, toilets, signage, parking, paving, not to mention insurance costs for the city in the event of an accident, response to noise pollution complaints. I hear everything, whether I go to Dellafield downtown, the parties are not because water, you know, sound carries over water. And there'll be a lot of public nuisances, like public urination. I mean, really, loud arguments, perhaps even violence, overflow of garbage, drug use perhaps. I have a studio on the Mobbin, and that's called Ganja Bay over there. So, you know, it's just when you sort of put unregulated people together and look the other way, or you can't get there because the police department is stretched and your budget's stretched, well, you know, we're just not exempt from the kind of disorder that many of us moved here or love living here don't have to go through, that other communities do. I'd like to propose, rather than others have said, that the project be put on hold at least until some of these other considerations for the healthy use of our lake have really been looked at, the things Fran was talking about. We already have this thriving paddleboard and kayak scene. I was really surprised when I rented a kayak this summer that I had to crawl over rocks to get into the lake. A safe kayak dock rather than a rock pile to scramble over what I think be a real draw. And I looked on websites like Carolina Docks or Easy Dock. The thing is, these are a fraction of the cost of the semi-permanent transient pier, and kayakers go home when the sun goes down, as do paddleboarders. Plus, I had no idea that people from Negoawica Sailing Club were going to be here tonight. I've never sailed, but we love looking at the regatta. And like the sailboats, the kayaks and canoes and what have you are such a kid-friendly scene. And when a family comes down there, all they have to do is walk across and, you know, have an ice cream or a chocolate, or go to Clearwater, or, you know, they're right there, and it's the whole family or a bunch of friends who are hungry from kayaking. I don't know, you know, when you have a pontoon boat, it's a party scene, and you're anchoring out in the lake to get sunburned and drink. I mean, more power to them, I want everybody to be able to do it, I just don't want them to block downtown. I was thinking, you could make me mayor of this. Paddleboard parades, costume parties, dog boarding competitions, I went a little nuts here. So, instead of damaging and discouraging people from coming down to an obstructed pier, which I greatly fear will in time become a dangerous nuisance and an eyesore as we are unable to maintain it, let's do the responsible thing in the fiscal vision for the city and stall the pier for now and think of other ways to promote the vitality and usage of our beautiful lake. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to anything on or off the agenda tonight? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Carol McAllister. McAllister is spelled M-C-A-L-L-I-S-T-E-R. I live at 1925 Moraine End Drive in the city of Dellafield. I would like to mention three projects which might be good investments for the city's money. First, there is the hole on the western side of the brick crosswalk over Genesee Street near the post office. Hundreds of cars drop into it every day. Would it be possible to fix that crosswalk? It would benefit thousands of us in the course of the next few years. Second, there is antiquated playground equipment in Fireman's Park. I'm sure a number of children, as well as their parents, would appreciate new and up-to-date equipment. Third, there are the steps in front of City Hall. It would be appropriate to have them reflect our city properly, instead of suggesting that we are careless of maintenance. I'm sure you know the city very well and could suggest other projects which would benefit the people who live here. I do not feel that the piers in St. John's Bay are a worthwhile investment, not only because they will damage the lake as a whole, but because they will benefit only a few. I ask that you prioritize those projects which benefit large numbers of Dellafield residents and that you invest our city funds wisely for the common good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to anything on or off the agenda this evening? Seeing none, citizens' comments are now closed. We'll move on to the consent agenda, which is approve the 2025 Waukesha County Tax Collection Services Agreement.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. Abstentions? Okay. We'll have them, do we collect taxes, or they collect taxes and they pay us? It's both. It's both.
They collect taxes.
We'll let them collect them. All right. Number nine, boards, committees and commission reports, licenses. Molly, we've got reserve, additional reserve, oh, this is good news. How about that?
So the Department of Administration released their population, finalized population for 2025, which gave us, we met the threshold to be granted the ability to issue an additional reserve liquor license. In preparing to kind of present that publicly, I came across a resolution that was passed in, I guess, 2009, by the way we number our resolutions, that requires the council to go through a process to award and allocate that license. Just a quick overview is provided in the memo in the packet. But essentially, we accept applications, the council reviews them, and then they award that license based on some items in the resolution for them to consider. I will, I've included the resolution, I've included a summary, so I'll leave that up to you guys to review, so I don't get too long-winded here like I tend to do. But what I'm looking for is a timeframe on this, the timing of when this information was released versus collecting and reviewing those applications kind of comes along during a busy budget season, so I didn't want to, there's no required timeline in the resolution. So I was hoping the council could direct me as to when you would like those applications due, then I would prepare a notice in accordance with that date, so.
So a quick question, do, do we know that there's any kind of a backlog where there's applications pending?
I don't know that there's any kind of a backlog. I will say frequently throughout the year, I get two to three calls on people checking to see if we have a license. I am not sure if people are waiting in the wings per se, or if it's one person that's called three separate times just to see where we're at in the process. But I do get calls, so I know that there's interest here, and I just, it's hard to gauge the interest because a lot of times it's anonymous people who are just kind of checking and feeling the situation out, so I don't get a ton of information. So I guess action I'm looking for from the council would simply be to just think about timing and when they would like the, the due date at least for those applications this year, December, November.
The normal, normal course of business, if one's available, what is the, what is the due date?
That would depend on if they have a approved business, business plan of operation yet. So it could be an application from somebody who has a beer license, looking for a liquor license in addition to their beer license. If they already have an established business plan of operation, it would be a lot faster than somebody who is looking to come into the city. But a lot of times too, there's an understanding that they would be granted that license if they proceed further with that business because they have to get their lease, get the business established, put the business into action. So having that approval ahead of time is helpful for business owners who are attempting to establish their business restaurant in the city.
Molly, given the process that you outlined, would you have a recommendation on what a good deadline would be that you would suggest to the council?
I, I would suggest a deadline maybe of, you know, November 30th. That would give folks time to kind of consider if they have interest, start the application process and just, if they don't have a business, again, they might not want to proceed further with any future steps in their plan without knowing that they're going to have that liquor license, so.
Care to make a motion?
Yeah, does it need to be an open process like that, or is it, can it just be like the first person to submit an application?
So the process was outlined by resolution.
Sure.
So I, I think that following the resolution process would be appropriate.
Okay.
If we receive no applications during that timeframe, then I would say, you know, as we receive applications, then the council should do their normal business of reviewing and determining if that's an appropriate, you know, applicant for that license, but...
Okay.
So I mean, to Tim's, or to Mayor Iker's point earlier, we could have nobody apply in that 15, 15-day window. I'm just not sure what we're looking at. It is a high commodity.
I guess if you set like a November 30th, there would be, we could get an aggregate of, like if there's four people, we could decide who gets it.
Yeah, I'll move to set a deadline for November 30th.
Second.
Is that enough?
Yep.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, motion passes.
Is that Wilkin on the second?
Yes. Okay, is that it for licenses?
That is it.
All right, Plan Commission, Dirk.
No meeting, no report.
Easy enough. Lake Welfare, Alderman Price.
Yes, we met on the eighth. We had three main discussions, one on wake surfing, wake surfing boats for the possible discussion of permitting on the wake, wake boats in the future. Another discussion on the erosion runoff issues we have in major storms off the east side of the lake and how to remedy that situation. And then the last discussion was then possibly providing the police department with a sound meter so they, on the lake patrol boat in order to give warnings to tickets to boats with excessive noise in the water. So I'll be meeting with the police chief to discuss that. That was it.
All right. D, Park and Rec Commission, Alderman Schaefer.
No meeting, no report. Our next meeting is one week from tonight.
Okay. Public Works Committee, Dirk.
No meeting, no report.
You're getting off easy. Okay, well, so am I. Delhard Commission, we did not have a meeting, and we'll have one in about five weeks. Police Commission.
To continue the pattern, no meeting, no report.
See, when we're back to two a month meetings, we get a lot of these. Okay, Library Board.
We did have a meeting.
All right.
So I will keep it short. We had some discussion still on creating a library, a foundation for the library that would be potentially either a separate committee or a separate entity entirely that would raise money for projects such as maybe expanding the library or projects like that. We're very early in the discussions, we'll continue to talk about that. Next week is the, next Tuesday is Culvers in Wales, so from four to seven, you can go there and support the Friends of the Library who like to donate to the library as well. Yeah, that's it.
All right, thank you. Promotional, oh, Zoning Board of Appeals, I don't believe there's a meeting.
No meeting.
All right, okay. Promotional and Tourism Commission.
There was a meeting, but I was ill, so I will direct people to look for the minutes online. Sorry.
Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission, I don't know that there was a meeting. We will be talking some Lake Country business shortly. Same with Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board. Dear Management Committee.
No meeting, no report, and next meeting's tomorrow night.
Okay. Other committees, commissions and boards, none. Unfinished business, 10. 10A, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Proposed Amended Lake Country Fire and Rescue Intermunicipal Agreement That Addresses Funding, Staffing, Governance and Other Miscellaneous Matters. Plenty to talk about here. Tom, you want to help us out, how we might want to navigate this?
Yes, this has been on the council's agenda, I believe, the last two meetings that we've had discussions. And we've been trying to work with the various attorneys representing each of our partners to try to bring the agreements up to snuff with regards to correcting various mistakes, inconsistencies and whatnot that have been identified. But unfortunately, that did not get done in time for this meeting, and so what we put together is a couple of things. First of all, the memorandum of understanding that was at your seat before the meeting today is slightly different down in the yellow area from the version that's in the packet. Our mayor and our city attorney worked through some final wording in that today. Primarily, there was wording in there that talked about the ultimate 12 number of firefighter employees and that, that that could be, could happen sooner than four years, and so that was removed. And then the second thing is, what we did is, we put together a resolution, we kind of followed what Shaniqua did, and they passed a resolution saying that they generally agree with the agreements in principle, subject to final working out of other issues that are of, of less substance. And so we followed suit, put together a similar resolution that talks about agreeing the doc, agreeing with the documents in principle, and then gives the authority to myself and the mayor to finalize issues of lesser substance. And then those issues are identified in a list of 25 items attached to that resolution as far as the final things that we still see that we need to work through. I know in talking to Alderperson Loughlin immediately before the meeting, he said that he had some additional items to add to that, and so, you know, if there are additional items, given the council any, any heartburn or the things that need to be addressed, now would be the time to do that so that we can work through those items with our partners. You know, ideally, we're getting late in the game. I think it's December 1st that all seven municipalities have to agree on a consistent budget, and if that's not done, then we revert back to the 2025 budget with no capital funding. Nobody wants that, and so, you know, we are at a point where we really do need to be pushing this forward. And so with that, I'll open it up for council discussion.
Well, you know, I'll embellish that just a bit, and that is, based on the IMA amendment that was in front of us, there was a couple significant sticking points that were in there that we wanted to make sure were clear, and that in our last meeting, we, we highlighted, and they were kind of action items that we wanted to take forward. One of them was to be clear that the existing term in the, in the agreement that we have today without amendment has matured to the point where any municipality that's part of this agreement could put in a two-year notice, and they would be eligible to be exiting if they, if there was an opportunity for them to do so or it made sense. In our last municipal leaders' agree, meeting, that was agreed to that that would, that would stay as opposed to refreshing that and having a five-year commitment, which seemed to be problematic for, for us in particular, and some, raised eyebrows with a couple others, but mostly us, and that was, was really pushing the issue as far as evaluating things like proposals, like one that we heard earlier tonight, where we would be looking at a, like six weeks to figure that out if yea or nay, and that's, that's clearly not enough time to vet something like that, or look at potentially other options. So we asked that that two-year remain in, and the resolution that Shaniqua passed was okay with either two or three, and so we're, we're, we're going forward tonight with a suggestion that we're supporting the amendment with that two years staying intact. Also, the other, the other two items that are in here that, that we discussed as being high on the list of concern for us was the funding formula and how quickly it was cut in and what the impacts were, and we talked about those numbers in our last meeting, and that would represent for us like next year about a, less than a 1% increase in, in our fire fee and somewhere in the neighborhood, it's single, still single digits for 2027 for the next year. And so that gives us some sanity in saying that we're in good shape fiscally for the next two years with, with the contract. And then the other thing that we did talk about that we didn't want to move on, but it seems to be a concession point, and that is having the governance on the board, the fire, fire board level be something that they can move forward with a passing in action with six out of seven agreeing as opposed to being unanimous. Some concerns were raised in the meeting about what that meant for our ability to prevent borrowing by the board without unanimous consent or a budget being passed without unanimous consent, and both of those are covered, that those, we, they'll still have to pass this body if they do pass the board on a six, seven vote. So although that's one minor concession that's a major for some people, but those are the three big points, I think, that were in the IMA that were highlighted in our discussions here, and they all seem satisfied as far as I'm concerned. If you read through Tom's list of, there's some in there that seem substantial. I mean, there's a question, is, is the funding that Village of Oconomock Lake for the 20s, graduating up to about $20,000 in maintenance costs, is that a voluntary agreement or is that mandatory and where is it designated for? How significant is that in the terms of a, of a seven to 10 million dollar budget moving forward is questionable, but that's why it's kind of categorized in this resolution as non-substantive. If there's some give and take in that list of Tom's items and anything else that we bring up, we're looking for a resolution, resolution to engage with our partners, saying we're moving forward with this, let's get them on board, and let's work out these details and give staff and me the authority to do that without volleying this back and forth based on our disparate schedules, which would take us into middle of next year if we work through all these 26 things. So that's my embellishment, if that makes sense. So is there anything other than what's on Tom's list that you wanted to add to these concerns? Yes?
Thank you, Jackie. It's minor, but while we're doing typos and everything, on page one, in the second line of, of the intermunicipal agreement, there's a typo that says made and entered. Entered should have an additional E in it, should be E-N-T-E-R-E-D.
Okay, without, we're going to find, we're going to find a couple dozen similar things.
Okay.
If we're looking, so let's talk about, outside of, let's talk about more policy, procedure, budget items.
The other question.
I, I appreciate your, your eye to detail though, Dirk, but...
The, the other question I had in section 15B1, that has to do with the Oconomock Lake contribution, and it says that the LCFR board has sole discretion, subject to approval of the Village of Oconomock Lake, which sounds contradictory to me.
That's, that's one of Tom's items? That's Tom's item number 25?
I read it, and it didn't, didn't sound the same to me, but, okay, if that's, if that's a concern, then I'm good with it.
Well, it's bringing, it's bringing the management of that, of those funds, mandatory, not designated destination into question, and that's something we just need to resolve.
Yeah.
And it's, like I said, so that the dollar amount, it was, nobody raised, so for, for the record, nobody raised it as a concern or an ask of Village of Oconomock Lake. This came up as a voluntary topic to help like, you know, while other people were going back and forth, like how much is this hurting us, they're like, well, we're just going to throw this in the ring for consideration.
Right.
Yeah. So this wasn't, this wasn't, this wasn't a bartering token that was pride from them. It came out of nowhere, frankly, and we're just looking to clarify it.
I, when I looked at number 25, I looked at that from the contribution perspective, whereas section 15B1 looked more like it was on the spending side.
Understood. That's where, like, is it used for a non-budgeted expense? That's, so Tom, Tom just didn't get enough, I'm on the right page, right, Tom? Were you, recognized the same issue?
I've added Dirk's additional concern. I think they're similar but slightly different.
I'm not trying to shoot these, I'm just, okay. Anyone else have more to add?
I have more to add, but I didn't come prepared to add it. It's a, I didn't have time to go through all of Tom's changes today. I didn't get the packet till this morning, so it's, in the first page, I'd implied that we weren't going to be doing that tonight, so I didn't, I didn't do it. I can, I can give you some highlights here, but I mean, if you put this up for one, I'm gonna have to say no because I don't know what the hell I'm voting on. But it's a, it's a, I think what makes a lot more sense is to go back with confirmation that, yeah, we agree with the formula change. We agree that we're going to go forward with, for the years that we're in the deal for at least two, and if we're in for all four, all four, keep adding our firefighters. I don't think there's any question that we want to do those things.
Mm-hmm.
That seems to be all they really need to get the budget moving, isn't it?
Well, it's the memorandum of understanding needs to be passed.
The memorandum of understanding's got language problems, in my opinion. There was, there's a whereas in here that suggests we're happy with the funding formula. I'm certainly not. And it's a, I'm, I'm accepting that's an improvement, but I'm not, the issue's not resolved. That's why we're talking to other alternatives. And the, it also seems to have an inconsistency where this document, if taken on its face, seems to conflict with the IMA because it seems to suggest they were in this deal all the way through 2029. It doesn't say we can get out.
What the- What, the memorandum of understanding?
Yeah. It's implying that we're in, we're approving this thing all the way out. But if we're not in, are we still obligated for those years?
Nope.
Well, it doesn't say that here. And that's the truth. It should say that here because it seems consistent with the IMA. And the same with this, the whereas provision where it says that the, that we found a wrinkle around the levy limits. I want to see the technical maneuvers we're doing to make sure that we are clearly on its face, not doing something we're not supposed to here. And it's a, without knowing what we have, I'm, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, that last, that last point, wrinkle around the levy limits, where is, where are you suggesting?
Um, hold on a second, let's see where it is. Maximum budget increase allowed by the current LCFR intermunicipal agreement is insufficient to implement the LCFR full-time firefighter paramedic staffing level increase that each of the LCFR member municipalities desire. We've engaged in negotiations and discussions for the purpose of basically getting around that. I don't know what gets around that. I don't know where we're statutorily safe here. And I want to make sure that we are before I say, yeah, okay. And it's a, and then it further goes on to say that we have addressed the deficiencies in the municipal agreement. We have not. Looking at the MOU, it's all over it, all the whereas provisions.
So the MOU is not intended to repeat everything that's in the IMA. And termination is covered in the IMA. The, the MOU is only intended to get all communities. And quite frankly, it was our partner municipalities that wanted the city of Delafield to commit to that we will budget enough to hire three new employees each year. With regards to levy limits, levy limits no longer apply to the city of Delafield with regards to fire services. We don't fund fire out of our levy. We fire, we fund fire out of the fire fees. So that no longer applies. And the reason why the levy limits needed to be taken out of the agreement is because we need to approve budgets that are greater than CPI plus 2% to accomplish what we all want to accomplish.
I guess I would just suggest that we not make perfect the enemy of the good. This is something that has been worked on for such a long time. And we keep nitpicking it to the point where we will never have a perfect agreement. And I think we need to put faith in Tom and, and Tim and our fire chief and everybody involved in this process and give them the, empower them to put this to bed. It is just going on too long. And every time there's just more, I just, for lack of a more kind term, nitpicky. And this is incredibly detailed. So I guess I'm gonna put faith in Tim and Tom and say, let's, let's move forward on this.
You can allow nitpicking. I'll call it responsible behavior.
Oh, come on, Steve. I'm very responsible.
Don't, let's make statements and that burbs at each other. But so, no, if there's, so the, the resolution is not, is saying that, that we're leaving this open to non-substantive contract changes. Something that would be substantive is a tweak to the formula, absolutely substantive. Clarifying something like Tom has in his, in his list, the definition of call volume, that, that is something that is just, there's language that was removed from the other IMA that's different in this one, that we want to make sure that we're not changing the meaning of call volume because that is substantive to the, to the, to the formula. But if, if you're, if you're displeased with the funding formula that's, that's the core to this change, then you should vote against it because that's not gonna change this year. And if we vote against this amendment, we will have a situation next year where we'll be spending, we will be quote, saving the taxpayers about $8 a household on their fire fee, but we would not be getting the benefit of the three new, three new hires. And we would not be getting the benefit of the ongoing cooperation with our six partners toward potential other options that we could explore moving down out further than just two, three, four years in the future. So, yeah, if, if you're adamant that the formula is, is, is not, is not worth considering, then you should absolutely vote against this. It's, again, and I'm not saying, it's not nitpicking to say it's a bad formula.
Well, I don't like the formula, but I'm not saying I would vote against it because of the formula. I have a problem with the language suggesting the subject's closed for the future. Because this memorandum of understanding does not flow consistently with the IMA.
It's contingent upon the IMA. It says upon approval of, of the IMA. It's.
Right. But it doesn't agree with the IMA. It then throws out language that's different.
This does nothing. So.
Well, I think, I think that a litigation attorney might have a field down with this if, if they wanted to come and try and force something past two years. So it's a, I don't think it's a good document yet. I don't think that it necessarily has anything that's not what we intend to agree, except that it doesn't say that.
A memorandum of understanding is not a legally binding contract outside of the IMA. So the IMA overrules everything that's in here.
Isn't that what the city attorney told us at the last?
Yes.
Yes.
This, this gets us in, in the right direction.
No, that's, I was, I was, it was asked and answered today by, by me to Kathy. If, if there's something in, like, could you, could you twist words in this if there was any ambiguity and have that be the grounds for us being held to something we didn't intend to be held to? And she said that this, this, this would be, you, it would, it would, everything would defer to the IMA as far as what the agreement would be as far as in a, in a court. This is, this is us agreeing with our partners that this is how we're going to approach the future budgets when it comes to those four, three new hires a year for four years. And if we're not here in two years to agree to year three, they would go on with this understanding without us. You know?
Okay. What's the language that you need for the motion?
Resolution. I can.
It could simply be as, as simple as motion to approve resolution number 2025.
2025 dash 12.
Dash 12. It could be as simple as that.
I, I would recommend based on, based on Alderman Loughlin's suggestions and, and that, that he doesn't have anything to add to this list, that it would be contingent upon this list and any other non-substantive changes that would arise in a timely manner.
I can't see.
We can't bring them up, we can't bring them up on November 30th.
All right. So I, I'll move to approve resolution 2025 dash 12. Is that right? Subject with the.
The satisfaction of the.
The satisfaction of the appendix list. Is that?
Tim suggested and any other non-substantial changes that arise.
Okay. And any other non-substantial changes that arise?
In a timely manner.
In a timely manner.
That's relative, but I mean.
At the discretion of the mayor and Tom.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Is there, I know this, I, I apologize. I really, really wanted to get a before and after. This is what the, the amendment was proposed to be. Here's the redlined final version. There might be one I had not dotted. It's not what we arrived at. And the example I gave in talking to some people before the meeting is, we're not, we're not a collection of seven municipalities with 100,000, 100,000 people in them each with full-time legal staffs and people at a dedicated time to this. There was a substantial amount of effort put into it, but calendars were a mess and trying to get this done in, in four weeks didn't happen. So we're leaving this open-ended with that, the faith in Tom and I and our other peers at our other municipalities to do this with the understanding that we know your intent and we'll be communicating a lot as we go through this process.
Yeah. The one other thing I will say is, again, I don't, I don't see this as a perfect document. I don't see it as a perfect solution to the problem that we've had over the last four or five years now. However, this is a huge step in the right direction and it is a huge show of cooperation with our partners that we are working together, which for the first, I, I honestly feel like this is the first real step we've had at cooperation with partners in a few years. So I don't think this is the perfect solution. I hope it's not the end. I hope we continue to negotiate and, and find a more palatable solution for the city. But I am really happy that we are actually working with our partners and, and moving towards a more, a fair, a more fair.
Equitable.
Yeah, equitable solution. So I, I just want to say that. I don't, I don't think this is the end, but I do think this is a great step.
And it provides, I think, some badly needed reassurance to all of our constituents that we are, we agree on the basic principles and we are making progress and we do support our lake country fire and rescue.
Totally agree.
Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? All right. Mark the calendar. Thanks, everyone. This is a lot of work and we've got some work ahead of us. So motion passes. Wonderful. Mayor's report. First order business, confirm appointment of Travis Maynard to the vacant Village and the Shota representative position on Lake Welfare Committee to expire for 2026. Village and the Shota gets a representative on our Lake Welfare Committee and they haven't had one for a while and they got us the nomination. So we get to put this person on. If, if you agree, if someone makes a motion to accept my appointment.
I shall move.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. All right. Welcome, Travis. Aside from that, I'm sure there's lots of other things I'd like to say, but my, the, the business trick-or-treating the other night was just spectacular. So thanks for the chamber for doing that. My wife, my daughter and my granddaughter all went down. I didn't go, so I'm sorry, but I, I was taking care of the house. But they had a blast. So people were wondering what all the traffic was and it was a minor inconvenience, but you know, hey, it's tough to be popular. You know, it was a really big event. So thanks for the chamber for doing that.
It was also Fright Night at Lapo Peak last weekend. So.
All right. Well, and our trick-or-treating is next weekend on Saturday. So in recognition of years of service for seeing employees, I did that last, last month, but we've always, like we saw tonight, we've got great people working for us and police fire DPW. So when you see them, say hi, thanks. So new business, approval of vouchers payable for dates from October.
I move to approve the voucher list.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Okay. Voucher list is approved. Reports of city officials. Mr. Hafner.
Yeah. The first thing is just a reminder about our upcoming budget process. This week Thursday, we do have the budget workshop that'll be in this room at 6 o'clock. And then two weeks from now, we will have the budget public hearing at the regular council meeting. And then finally, on November 17th, at the regular council meeting, we will have final action on the budget. Budget books actually went out this afternoon. Right after they went out, we became aware of two mistakes in project descriptions in the capital budget. So those will be corrected and you should see a, a new document tomorrow. But those are relatively minor. And then the last thing that I wanted to add tonight is we had our brush collection two weeks ago and I just have some statistics for that. I always like to share data when we've got it. But as far as resources used by a typical brush collection, the fall of 2025 brush collection, we utilized 180 man-hours to complete the collection, 1,296 trucks, truck miles, 49 hours of time on the loaders, 295 gallons of fuel used and 203 loads of brush hauled. So.
203 loads?
Yes.
We only had two of them this year.
The first, the spring, there was 271 loads. But any questions on that? If not, that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Tom. Molly, there's some new, good news here, too. You've got new liquor license and?
Yeah. And we have a new employee starting on next week, Monday, October 27th. Her name is Catherine.
Very good. Anything else?
That's it.
Plenty. Good. Nice to have some help. City treasures report would be in the packet if there's one this month. I already had it in there before. Council requests for future agenda items. Any? Got the budget, we'll be seeing each other a lot. Okay. Correspondence in the packet with no other business being shown. We're now adjourned at 8:31. Thank you.